We're going to proceed your bylaw as the mayor and deputy mayor are not physically present tonight. The members of council in presence are required to appoint a chair. Bye Kathy.
I would like us to nominate councillor Plata to chair us.
I'd like to nominate councillor Legales.
Do you want to?
If you're willing.
So what's the next to do?
So the people that are nominated, do they accept or not?
Oh yeah, do they accept them?
If you're willing, if you want to do it, Judy.
No, if you want to go ahead, I'll decline then.
Oh yeah, I can, I can turn.
Okay, thank you. We don't need the vote yet.
Okay, so councillor Ellis, do you have to call the meeting to order?
Okay, so I call the, I call the meeting to order at 7:01. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Chair, I have to serve you a...
I've got an amendment to the agenda here, councillor Ellis.
Sure, go ahead.
So to add a resolution to tonight's meeting. At 7:28. It's to approve Mayor Fenske's appointment as chair of the AMM Cities Caucus Committee.
Okay, so yeah, at 7:28 we're going to add a resolution to appoint Mayor Dennis Fenske as the chair of the AMM City Caucus. And councillor...
I also like to serve the written notice, motion received by law.
Hold on here, we have to one, one thing at a time councillor Wong.
You're already done, so my turn.
It's not your turn yet, we've got a motion to amend and now, obviously now we'll have to have a mover and a seconder for that motion or for that amendment.
Can I get a mover for the amendment?
Into the agenda councillor Valentino and a seconder. Councillor Judy Colada, so all in favor?
Okay, so that will be added to the agenda at 7:28?
Yes it will.
7:28 we're going to add the resolution to appoint Mayor Dennis Fenske as the chair of the AMM City Caucus. Okay, next item.
Is it you now Gary?
Yeah, next item.
To the chair, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to serve a written mo- motion received by law 195, 1957, 2017, thank you.
Motion to rescind?
Yeah, so we have a motion to rescind from councillor, councillor Wong. I'm submitting a written motion to rescind by law 1957, 2017 under municipal act section 139, 1A B. So that will be added on to the, the next agenda. Yeah. Okay. So the next, the next item on the agenda is general inquiries, does anyone...
Do you have to have the approval of the agenda?
Oh sorry. Okay, can I have a, they, can I have a, to approve the, to approve the amended agenda councillor Colada and councillor Valentino. All in favor? It is carried. It's carried. So next we'll go to general inquiries. Oh before general inquiries, we have, sorry, we have Mayor Fenske, deputy mayor Smook, councillor Byer and councillor Foley and city manager Gary Sepatelli joining us by teleconference. Go ahead.
Yes, Les Ellsworth, president of the United Steelworkers Local 6166, I have a number of questions for councillor tonight. And they are as follows. Do the taxpayers in Thompson have to pay for repairs or battery replacement in the water meters? I know you'll need to have a couple of meetings to discuss that, so I'll move on. Do the city of Thompson have enough equipment to maintain the roads? And my third question is, looking at your agenda tonight, talking about the increase in water rates that has not been passed by the public utilities board according to what I read. So my question is, are taxpayers expected to see increases to their 2018 water rates despite it not being passed by the public utilities board? Thank you for your time.
City financial officer Krantz, do you want to answer any of those questions? Those questions in consideration and we'll, we'll answer them at the next meeting. Anyone, anyone else?
My question to you. When I asked for the engineering report for the last meeting and previous, I still haven't got a reply. What is the answer, yes or no?
City, city financial officer Jenny Krantz, do you... In terms of the engineering report that was asked for?
Is this, is this in regards to Norplex flow?
Yes, yes.
So the FIPR request is currently being processed. It's almost 30 days already, so I should have a yes or no answer?
Being processed.
Okay, second question.
I look at your proposed rate, I calculate, my water rate, my water bill is going to go up almost $350 a year. Why?
In terms of the water rate, the, the water utility can... Yep, the, the water utility can never have a, have a deficit, right? So we have to set the, the, the water, the water rate so that, that we're able to cover all our expenses in regards to the utility. And there, there are a couple more expenses coming up in 2018. Regards to the...
Tell me, with this increase, how much it could cost a taxpayer a year?
How much is it going to cost?
Put into a taxpayer.
And we can get the, we can get the answer to you.
I'd like to have your answer.
Certainly, please tell us.
I want to hear your answer.
We'll, we'll, we'll answer it, we'll take that question under advisement, we'll answer it at the next meeting.
Is it councillor Ellis?
Yes.
If I heard the question right, it's sort of what's the financial impact on the rate increase?
Yes.
Is it correct?
That's correct, how much will it cost the taxpayers?
So, so really, really it depends on what the usage by each individual rate payer. The more water that they will use will be based on the new rates. The new rates will have to be approved by public utilities board.
Our consumption will stay the same. Because we are trying to save our costs, but look like we don't have a proper water meeting, meter reading every time I receive a bill which is right here in front of me. Every time it's estimate, no reading. We have all the equipment down there.
Any other questions, sorry?
Repeat, my question is, the consumption of my water wasn't increased, but if you increase the rate, my bill will be high. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But the previous meeting, there's a gentleman down here and asked a question about why we are getting the estimate reading and not the actual reading.
Can I make a request councillor Ellis? Because of the distance between Chu Chang and the phone, we're having a very difficult time hearing. Can you please paraphrase his question for us so we can hear it?
Okay, I believe that... You're, you're asking about the, the question from the last meeting about the, the gentleman that asked about why, why he was getting an estimated amount on his consumption and not a, an actual? Is that correct? Right.
Councillor Ellis? Councillor Ellis?
Yeah, Mayor Fenske?
Yes, the, the question last meeting in regards to, on the, on the bill statement that we each get as water user payers, rate payers. There was a statement that said no reading. There's two lines on your water bill, the top line has a number which is the cost for the water. The line that says no reading is in reference to the sewer, we don't read sewer. So the, no reading is reflective to the sewer rate, not to the water rate.
Okay. Is that, does that answer your question? Yeah. Is there any other questions?
I have some, I have some concerns over this resolution that they want to pass tonight for this. And one of them is on, where it says Vale charging the city of Thompson for raw water. Where's the figures on this?
Mr. Good, yeah. Yeah, he wants to know what the figures are in terms of the raw...
In August, October 31st of 2016.
That was part of the, of the application made to the water utilities board and in October 31st, 2016.
Okay, and what is going to be the cost? What, what's the city going to allow Vale for their potable water? Are they going to give them a flat rate?
You're asking if, if the city's going to give them a flat rate in terms of their potable water? That right, no.
Metered? Is there going to be a meter on it? You're going to be? Is it going to be, is it going...
He wants to know where the meter's going to be in terms of, of the, of Vale's potable water.
Foley will charge for the, the amount of water that they utilize based on a formula that's set out in the transaction agreement that was approved by council.
In other words, they're going to get a lower rate than what the citizens of Thompson pay? They're going to pay the same as us?
No, Vale will pay the rate that's set out in the transaction agreement.
Is it a lower rate or a higher rate?
Mr. Good.
Okay, the next now, there, there, there's going to be a meeting with the public utility board, how can you guys override the public utility board by charging us the new rate come January the first without having a hearing? Did you, did the...
Not overriding the public utilities board. The public utilities board goes through their process in order to approve the rate structure that has been put in place by the city of Thompson. They have not set a date for that public hearing if they intend to hold a public hearing. The city of Thompson in undertaking their due diligence needs to pass a resolution to get public utilities board to consider interim rates for 2018. That's the resolution that's on council tonight.
So without having a... Without having a hearing, you're asking the public utility board to allow you to start charging the new interim rate on January the first?
Ellis?
Yes.
It's Mayor Fenske. Just to clarify, the process for establishing rates through the public utility board is being followed. The public, public utility board, we're following their schedule and our fiscal year which is January 1st to December 31. They will not have a decision on our rate application by January 1. I advise to apply for interim rates so that we can cover our fiscal year starting January 1st with an interim rate until such time as the P U B can have their public hearing and provide back to us direction on our application. So we are establishing interim rates on the advice of the P U B because their schedule will not allow them to hear, have a public hearing and provide back to us by January 1st of 2018.
So what happens if they come in and they decide that they're not going to give you the, the increase? You're going to, you're, we're going to get our money back?
Then we would, we would have councillor Ellis, we would have to go back to what we charge if there's a difference and, and meet the difference. We can't do anything until we know what the public utility board has approved. If they approve our application, then we go forth with those rates. If they disallow, just like they disallowed Manitoba Hydro, then we would have to rebate if we've charged a higher rate than they will allow us.
Okay, my last question here. It says, carrying the cost for the new sewage treatment plant, did we not already borrow $12 million? Why, why are we, why do we have to have another carrying cost?
Can you repeat, can you repeat the question?
It says, carrying cost for the new sewage treatment plant. I said, did we not borrow $12 million for the new sewage treatment plant? Why, why, why we have to have another increase carry, for carrying cost?
We'll go to our chief financial officer to speak about the borrowing by law in regards to the, the monies required by the city of Thompson for this project. And so Jen, I would ask you just to talk about the process of, of cash flowing this project from the city of Thompson's perspective.
Sure, so the, the venture bylaw passed already is just the bylaw approving the borrowing of the funds. The borrowing of the funds for the venture won't occur until the project's completed and we have the final amounts that we owe. So in the interim, until that time, we have to finance those fees until we have the venture taken. So those financing charges will be the cost of financing the amounts that we have to until that time. The second thing is that we are getting one-third from the federal and one-third from the provincial governments. However, those costs don't get back to us right away. So we have to incur the costs, carry them until we get those payments from the federal and provincial governments. So there's a, there's a time lag between those two processes as well.
Borrow more money?
And borrow the $12 million yet, so that money doesn't get borrowed until the end. So this is just the financing of that $12 million plus any of the, the time difference between getting the money from the granting from the federal and provincial governments.
Councillor Ellis?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to clarify, Mr. Good's comment, the financing costs are, will be incorporated into our final borrowing, our portion. So in the meantime, we can't stop the project, we need to finance because the federal government and the, and the provincial government will not upfront money to the city of Thompson. So in our borrowing by law, we will include the cost of borrowing in the total amount required to fund this project.
Aren't, aren't you misleading us a little bit when you say, at that meeting we were at that you had to borrow a little over $12 million for the new waste treatment plant? And it's going to go more yet?
So just for clarification, that was, that was our intent in regards to the, the upset limits for the budget. We were clear in our statements that our portion would be up to 12.1 change million dollars. Depending on the final budget and costing of the project. The project has so far been under budget. Any, any realizations of savings will go against any additional costs identified during the life of the, of the project. But we were upfront and transparent with the community that any cost over and above the $36 million identified would be borne by the city of Thompson and not by the federal government or the province.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on. We're going to move on to the adoption of the minutes. We, 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 the, the question period only goes for 10 minutes and we've already gone past our time, so we're going to move on to the agenda. So the adoption of the minutes. So we have the regular. Moved by councillor Colada, seconded by councillor Valentino. Resolved the minutes, the regular meeting on council held on council, at council chamber city hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Tuesday, November 14th, 2017. Be adopted as circulated. All those in favor? Pass, yeah. Okay, pass unanimously. Okay, so next we have, we have the committee, committee reports. We have the HR, which HR committee, which I am the chair. Just gonna, do I have the report here? No, okay. Thank you. So the human resources committee report. The committee members are councillor, councillor Judy Colada who, who's the past chair, councillor Dennis Foley and Mayor Dennis Fenske until November 1st, 2017. Councillor Smook, myself, councillor Ellis is the chair and Mayor Dennis Fenske effective November 1st, 2017. Administration's Gary Sepatelli, city manager and Deanna Conacar, HR manager. Recruitment and hiring, various recruitment efforts to fill vacancies during, during this time have filled both the safety manager and the director of development services position with employees starting in December. Public relations, presentation to, to pathway classes on careers and employment with the city of Thompson. Attendance at the industry night at U C N to promote city of Thompson on the, as the employer of choice. Policies, the review and revision of various policies. Currently under review are the travel policy, the company vehicle policy, the code of ethics, drug and alcohol, criminal records checks and return to work. The return to work, collaborating with union leaders to review and update city, city return to work program including the return to work policy. Bargaining, successful collective bargaining with the local firefighters union, I A F F, local 2200 and other various labor relations and grievances, et cetera.
Councillor Ellis?
Yes councillor Byer?
Can you please, in the preamble, can you please change councillor Coling Smook to deputy mayor councillor Smook?
Okay, yes, definitely we can.
Thank you. So is there any questions regards to, to the report? See none, we'll, we'll move on. Next is correspondence, we have a letter from Teresa Rozick, the assistant, the associate assistant deputy minister of health, seniors and active living in regards to the outstanding ambulance receivables. So. Dear, dear Mayor Fenske, your letter addressed to health, health seniors and active living minister Kevin Gertson requesting a meeting to discuss outstanding ambulance receivables has been referred to me for response. I apologize for the delay in responding to you. Regrettably, minister Gertson, Gertson's schedule precludes him to meet with you at this time. The process for recovering payment relates to disputed First Nation Innuent Health. Ambulance service invoices is for the Northern Regional Health Authority to work with the city of Thompson to resolve outstanding financial issues. The N R H A is aware of the invoices and is working to complete review of the backlog invoices from the city of Thompson. N R H A will establish an ongoing process to ensure this backlog does not occur in future. I would recommend that city of Thompson officials and staff meet with Sharon Hoodie. H R, and the N R H A's chief financial officer to resolve any issues related, related to payment of ambulance services. Let me contact her, and there's the contact information. Yours sincerely, Teresa Rozick, Associate Assistant Deputy Minister. Chief Financial Officer.
Just to provide information for council and the public, we did receive our, we have been working with Sean Lady on this issue and we did receive our first payment of the invoice we submitted on Friday. So it was approximately $324,000, so this process has begun.
Very good. Any, any comments regards to the, to the correspondence?
Councillor Ellis?
Mayor Fenske?
Yes, we have secured a meeting with Minister Gertson tomorrow afternoon, so we'll be meeting and raising this issue as well.
Well, so we'll move on, next we, we have resolutions. So 7.1, a resolution to approve the sole source for Water Care, Benteck Canada. Moved by myself councillor Ellis, seconded by councillor Wong. We resolve that council approves sole sourcing for Water Care, A42080 to, to Brentag, Canada for 2018 at a cost not to exceed $419,760 plus applicable taxes. Go to administration for... No? Yes?
In regards to my memo for council there and really that this product is an integral component of the treatment process. As we take over the, the ownership of the waste, of the water treatment plant January 1st, we have to enter into the sole sourcing contract.
Any comments from council, councillor Valentino?
Just sitting on the water treatment plant committee, this is like a chemical and it's something that's time sensitive that we have to order it now so that it arrives the first week of January. And so we have to sole source it even though we don't become the owners of the water treatment plant until January 1st, but we need it for the first week of January.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wong?
My question is, this, this supplier is, been supplied Vale for the chemical, right? So my question is, in the future, are we going to tender out the, the, the chemical from other company to bid on it? Because I, I gather information and in the history, Vale always get charged more from supplier because of big companies. So I, I suspect this is not the best price in the market. So I like to see we do our due diligence. I understand the time sensitive issue, so we need to have the chemical in place by 2018. But doesn't mean this is the best price, in my opinion. So I would suggest to tender out in the future to get a better price.
Councillor Ellis?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Hey, I'm not speaking against tendering out, but what other councillors need to be aware of is that the, there's not a lot of sources, a lot of suppliers for some of the chemicals that are required at the water treatment plant. And not all chemicals that are produced are the same. So Vale had done their due diligence and they had tested other sources and they did not work as well in the system. And then they went through several months long testing of other, of the chemicals from other sources and they found that they did not meet the standards for the water quality that we need to. So that is another reason for going with Water Care. So it's, it's not just a time sensitive, but I would suggest that for something as important as water quality safety that we don't just be purchasing on price, that anything that we entertain using if we're going to should also be tested in laboratory testing, very similar to what Vale has been doing over the years.
Thank you.
Well, what based on the councillor Byer comment is irrelevant to this question I'm asking. And how many company that you know in the market that only supply this chemical? Have you done your due diligence before you make the comment?
Councillor Ellis?
I'm going to go, I'm going to go to councillor...
Colada first and I'll go to Mayor Fenske.
My question is, is this a year's supply? Have we signed a contract? Once we're fully operating the water treatment plant, I think we, we need to become more knowledgeable about this. So I'd like to know if it's a year's supply and if we've signed a contract and how open we are.
Mayor Fenske?
Thank you, just to councillor Wong's comments. I believe councillor Wong has been on the water treatment plant committee for some time and should understand the due diligence that Vale has gone through in this product selection and the advice they have given us having operated the water treatment plant since 1960. So they have done their due diligence on behalf of city of Thompson and are recommending that we sole source to this supplier. If council feels otherwise and feel they are better in the knowledge of the product required by the water treatment plant, that's up to the, to the council. But understand that Vale who's operated the water treatment plant for this number of years is recommending that this process be followed to ensure the safety of the water quality that they have provided to us for many years.
Counselor Wong.
Thank you. To me, I think you're wrong. Vale only operate like less than fifteen years or whatever, it's not fifty over years. So, I think there's a little bit of outrage, the, the comment.
Counselor Ellis.
Again, clarification, again, I have to speak to Counselor Wong comment. The Vale and INCO previously have offered and operated the water treatment plant since its inception.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselor Valentino.
Committee through this whole process, and similar to what Counselor Byer has said, that Vale has given us the advice, and they did speak to the fact that they have looked at different companies that have this particular type of chemical, and they have tried others through their budget cuts and processes through the past. And they are recommending on their advice that this is the product that we use, and we sole source it to this company. So I think that we don't take their advice lightly, we take it very seriously because they are the ones that have been operating this plant. And when it comes to the safety of the water, and the advice and the information they have given us, I think that this is the, the proper process that we follow and we adopt.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, then we'll, I will call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. So the next resolution. So it's Resolution two thousand seventeen two hundred and fifteen, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Whereas Section one seven three dash one of the municipal act provides authority for municipality to borrow money by resolution for operating expenses during a fiscal year, providing the amount borrowed does not exceed the amount collected in taxes and grant in lieu of taxes in the previous fiscal year. Now therefore be resolved, the council authorized the credit arrangements of three million dollars overdraft between the City of Thom, City of Thompson and the Canadian Imperial Bank of Commerce, and it be resolved, be it further resolved, that all sums borrowed under the resolution will be supported by a charge upon the whole of the revenues of the City of Thompson. And I have a supporting document from City, Chief Financial Officer June, Krentz. And, so we can go to administration for... Yeah, you go ahead.
Um, so yeah, this is an annual resolution required by our banking arrangements. It's recorded annually, as a majority of our revenues are received in, in September when the taxes are due. And as well as our capital grants are not received until we've expended those, those funds. The Finance Committee will be discussing the future requirements for the wastewater treatment plant. And just to go to two thousand seventeen, there was only two months in which we did have a def, which we did require this overdraft, and that was in February and March of this year because we hadn't received our revenues related to two thousand seventeen yet.
Okay. I'll, I'll go to the, the mover. Counselor Valentino.
As Chief Financial Officer Jenny Krentz has said, that this is a housekeeping item that we identify once a year at this time. And on November twentieth, through the Finance and Admin Committee, we also reviewed this to take to Liga to bring on the agenda tonight.
Um, Counselor Wong.
Yeah, just want a clarification from administration. Is this three million dollars the same amount we always approve yearly basis? Just to, kind of like, in, a housekeeping thing? Or we are adding another three million dollars?
This is the same annual three million dollars we've been.
So we always, always have the three million dollars overdraft standby for whatever reason we need. Okay? Because the way that you, and we'll say the wastewater treatment plant is kind of confuse people that way. You know, that's why the question been asked earlier. So, that's how I can see the problem. Thank you.
Any other comments? So I'll, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. So then, the next resolution, two thousand seventeen two fifty-one, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Where, whereas the City of Thompson currently has a rate application in the Public Utilities Board for two thousand seventeen, two thousand, to two thousand and nineteen. And whereas the Public Utilities Board will not have a decision regarding our rates application before January first, two thousand eighteen. And whereas the City of Thompson's current rate will not cover the increased operating costs, the City of Thompson will occur as of January first, two thousand eighteen. And therefore result, the City of Thompson requests the following interim rates on X part basis from the Public Utilities Board, starting at year two of the two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen rate application effective January first, two thousand eighteen as follows. Proposed, proposed rate for, for year two, quarterly ser, service charge, eighty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Water, water per do, cubic meter, two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Wastewater for per cubic meter, a dollar twenty-eight. Minimum quarterly water and wastewater, a hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. Bulk water for per cubic meter, four dollars and ninety cents. Reconnection fee, three hundred and twenty dollars, and hydrant rental, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Go to administration for clarification? Okay, so can I? Oh, you go ahead.
Sorry, I was just gonna say this will not stop the Public Utilities Board hearing, which they're looking at probably early in two thousand eighteen, but not soon enough. We won't have a rate soon enough for the beginning of two thousand eighteen. Should they say that this isn't, that this is too high, or whatever, we will adjust according to recommendations.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll go to the mover. Counselor Valentino.
Yeah, just to clarify some of the points that have already been made about this, that we're just following the process set out by the Public Utilities Board. And because they don't have a date yet, and correct me if I'm wrong, we still are on interim rates from the last time that we sent in our proposal for two thousand and fifteen to seventeen, two thousand and fourteen. We've never got the approved rates yet. We're still on the interim rates. So their process, their timelines are very slow. So we have to do our due diligence, follow our process. Our fiscal year is December thirty-first, our utilities can't run a deficit. So we have to pass interim rates until Public Utilities Board gets through their many, many applications, and hears our public hearing or not, gives us our rates, or we stay on interim rates till another two years. But we're just doing our due diligence as we're at the end of our fiscal year.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Wong.
I've got a few question about this. Number one, for the last few years, we've been running interim. So are we running deficit based on the interim without approval from the Public, Public Utility Board?
Counselor Ellis.
I'm, I'm gonna go to... Over here first, before I go to... Yeah, go ahead.
The interim rates were approved by the Public Utilities Board. They are insured, and we have a board order approving the rates.
Okay.
So now, I'm not done yet, I have a few questions, sorry. How much you predict, your prediction for the increase we receive? Because two thousand eighteen, we are start taking care of the water treatment plant, I totally understand that. So how much is projection based on the rate that you come out? We will gather the amount? Have you projected based on consumption? Based on the number of meter we have? Because the quarterly survey charge, you have eighty-four dollars twenty-three cents. So you can do the math from there already, how much you gather? And then the water cubic meter per, per cubic meter, two dollars thirty-nine, and that's your projection, your, your interim rate you want to charge? So all this together, have you done the math? How much you projected to receive from this increase?
Those are the rates which are in our rate study, those were the rates which our contractor has, has, has calculated that, that that's what we would need to run it, to do it.
I understand, that's not my question. My question, what is the amount? I like to see the amount, not the, the suggestion for, to have you have done that or not.
I don't have that.
So how, how can we know by this increase will cover the wa, the water treatment plant? All the chemical, and the wages, and all that? Without a number, how can we know the increase will cover that?
There's, Counselor Ellis.
Yeah, go ahead, City Manager Sepatelli.
I mean, where council should be aware of this, this council was presented with the three-year rate study prior to it going to the Public Utility Board. So that three-year rate study had a, a rate year for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and two thousand nineteen. The two thousand seventeen, we did not get approval for, for the interim rates, and we had to revise ours to the previous two thousand seventeen rates that we had before. The two thousand eighteen rates were the rates that were identified in that three-year rate application, of which all council had access to and knows what those values were based on that three-year rate application.
Okay. Do you have any further questions? I would ask for a recorded vote. Okay. Counselor Colada.
Okay. I, I believe what you're saying is the two thousand and seventeen rates haven't been approved yet. We're on, we're on interim rates there. So I, I can't support a, a raise in the two thousand and eighteen prior to us having the pub or the Public Utilities Board approve the two thousand and seventeen. Am I right in, in that the two thousand and seventeen rates have not been approved by the pub?
We have a board order allowing us to use the interim rates.
So, that's, that's an approval, is it? Or is it something that they... Okay, if it's approval, I, I can, I can vote in favor of this. If it, if the two thousand and seventeen rates weren't approved, I, I couldn't support a request for two thousand and eighteen increase. So, thank you.
Is there any other con... Oh.
Counselor Ellis.
Yeah, City Manager Sepatelli.
Oh, it's just for council information. We submit rate applications to the Public Utilities Board. Public Utilities Board at times don't approve it in time. They require municipalities to put interim rates requests forward. Those interim rate requests, as, as mentioned by Ms. Taylor, have been given board order approval from Public Utilities Board. Just because they're interim rates does not mean that they're not approved. All our rates that we ask on have been approved by Public Utilities Board.
That was my question, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, we'll call the question. And under, with a recorded vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's everybody.
Okay. All those opposed? Okay. So, in, in a recorded vote, we have voting in favor, Mayor Fensky, Deputy Mayor Smook, Counselor Byer, Counselor Foley, Counselor Valentino, and Counselor Ellis, and Counselor Colada. And voting opposed? Counsel, Counselor Fo, no, Counselor Wong and Counselor Matichak. The next... The next resolution. So we have a Resolution two seventeen two fifty-two, moved by Counselor Wong, seconded by Counselor Colada. Whereas on April second, two thousand thirteen, council passed Resolution two thousand thirteen oh nine six, approving the Facilities Attachment License Agreement between the City of Thompson and Shaw Cable Systems Limited. And whereas Shaw Cable Systems Limited has requested an option to renew the license agreement for five years, commencing on April, from April first, two thousand eighteen to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And now therefore be it resolved that council approved the option to renew the facilities license agreement between Shaw Cable Systems Limited and the City of Thompson for a five-year term, commencing on April first, two thousand eighteen to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Go administration for... No? So we'll go to the mover. Counselor Wong.
Sure, I think Paul been doing a good job, so I'd like to extend the contract.
Any other... Any other comments or questions? Counselor Colada.
I think it's an excellent venue to inform the public. So, I, I think the public appreciates it, and, and Shaw Cable does do a good job for us.
The request is, we should have the video on the, YouTube update more frequent and not like a month or two month waiting.
Okay, is there any other comments or... Questions? If not, then we'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. The... The next resolution is two thousand seventeen two fifty-three, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Whereas the Thompson Trailbreakers Snowmobile Club has submitted a request to waive the land lease fees for Site A part, Parcel A Plan Number six one six one, PLTO North Division, consisting of thirty thousand square feet. And whereas the two thousand seventeen land leased fee, according to the, to the, to the approved City of Thompson Fee and Fine Schedule, is seven thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars. And whereas the Development Review Committee has reviewed the request to waive the land lease fees, and is recommending the request be approved. And therefore be resolved that council waived the Thompson Trailbreakers Snowmobile Club land lease fee for part, Parcel A Plan Number six one six one, PLTO North Division from October first, two thousand seventeen to September first, two thousand eighteen at a cost not to exceed seven thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars, where the Thompson Trailbreakers Snowmobile Club require, required to pay the amount, hundred dollar, one hundred dollars administration fee. So... Uh, yes, City Man, City Manager Sepatelli.
So this, this is one of four nonprofit groups that council considers waiving the, the fees for the land lease. So this is really an annual resolution that's brought forth, and really sort of a housekeeping in consideration with the, the policy that's been put into place.
The mover. Counselor Valentino.
Is that the Development Review Committee where this was discussed as per the other three nonprofit lease agreements coming forward?
And is there any other questions or comments? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh, we're gonna do that again? Let's do that again. All that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's carried. Our next resolution. Resolution two thousand seventeen two fifty-four, whereas the, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Colada. Whereas the Heritage North Museum has submitted a request to waive the land lease fee for Lot one and two, Block one seven eight, Plan eight four eight, PLTO North Division, consisting of four hundred, a hundred and forty-three, two hundred and fifty point one five square feet. And whereas the two thousand seventeen land lease fee, according to the approved City of Thompson Fee and Fine Schedule, is seven thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars, the maximum lease fee. And whereas the Development Review Committee has reviewed the request to waive the land lease fee, and is recommending the request be approved. And therefore it be resolved that council waived the Heritage North Museum land lease fee from October first, two thousand seventeen to September first, two thousand eighteen for Lot one and two, Block one seven eight, Plan eight four eight, PLTO North Division, at a cost not to exceed seven thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars, where the Heritage North Museum required to pay the annual one hundred dollars administration fee. I'll go to the, I'll go to the mover. Counselor Valentino. That... Counselor Colada.
Thank you. At a time when we're trying to retain our citizens, and we know that there's going to be cuts in jobs here, I think it's important for us to support quality of life organizations. And this is certainly an organization, as was the previous one, that does improve the quality of life in our community. So I will be supporting it.
Okay. Counselor Wong.
This is the thing I have problem with, like, when we have a lot of money, yes, we can waive whatever we want. But when we have financial struggling, I like to see some fee, not totally waive. So maybe a percentage, in the future, I'd like to see that change, not like hundred percent waive. Maybe fifty percent, maybe twenty percent, they gotta come up. Because I don't think the taxpayer will disagree with me. When we have a tough time, we have a financial challenge. Just like, when I donate money is when I have extra money I donate. When I have struggle, food in, on the table for my family, how can I donate? That's how I look at it, in my perspective. So I cannot support right now for hundred percent. Thank you.
Is there any other, any other questions or comments? If not, I'm, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries, the resolution carries. The next resolution, two thousand seventeen two five, two hundred and fifty-five, moved by Counselor Colada, seconded by Counselor Valentino. Whereas the, whereas the Thompson Wildlife Association has submitted a request to waive the land fees the land fees for Site B on Part Parcel A, Plan 6161, PLTO, North Division, consisting of 29,550 square feet, and for Part Parcel A, Plan 5282, PLTO, North Division, consisting of 16,192 square feet. And whereas 2017 land lease, according to the approved City of Thompson Fee and Fine Schedule, is $7,481, maximum lease fee. And whereas the Development Review Committee has reviewed the request to waive the land lease fee, and is recommending the request be approved, and therefore it be resolved that council waived the Thompson Wildlife Association land lease fee for Site B on Part Parcel A, Plan 6161, PLTO, North Division, and Part Parcel A, Plan 5282, PLTO, North Division, from October 1st, 2017, to September 1st, 2018, at a cost not to exceed $14,962, with the Thompson Wildlife Association required to pay the annual $200 administration fee. I'll go to... Yes?
Yeah, and I'll see that this is one of the nonprofit resolutions as well. Why the administration fee is doubled is because they've got two separate sites.
I will go to the mover, Counselor Calada.
Thank you. As mentioned in the previous two resolutions, I, I'm going to be supporting this, because we've traditionally supported waiving of fees. But as Counselor Wong mentioned, with our upcoming reduction in revenue, maybe it's time that we discuss this at, at our budget proceedings, and give, give the organization a heads up that we can't continue to waive 100% of the fees. I agree with Counselor Wong that, that there's, there's going to be difficulty in raising revenue, and that perhaps during our budget deliberations, we should be discussing what percentage we will waive in the future. But certainly I'm going to support this year's, this year's waiving of fees, because as I say, it's been traditional, and they are quality of life organizations, so I will be supporting it.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other comments? Counselor Matichak.
I'll be voting against this, quite simply because it, it waives the fees for two separate properties this year, so it's a little much. I would also go with something towards a percentage.
Counselor Wong.
Yes, I have a question for Counselor Byer. Is she a member of Thompson Wildlife Association?
Yes, I am.
So I think you should declare conflicts of interest for voting this.
No, I'm sorry, I, there's no pecuniary gain or any other gain from this.
You've been through the course, you should understand conflicts of interest.
Yes, I went to the workshop, there is clearly no conflict of interest.
So we'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. So next we have the Walk on Resolution. Resolution Number 217-256, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Calada. Be resolved that council of the City of Thompson approved the appointment of Mayor Fenske as Chair of the AMM Cities Caucus. I'll go to the, to the mover, Counselor Valentino.
And that's where Mayor Fenske, Deputy Mayor Smook, Counselor Byer, and Counselor Foley are right now. They are at the Association of Manitoba Municipalities meetings. So they have meetings through the days, and obviously the city caucus had their meeting and brought forth Mayor Fenske chairing the AMM Cities Caucus, so I'll definitely be supporting it. It would be great to have someone from Thompson be representing that as the chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any other comments or questions? Counselor Wong.
Recorded vote, please.
Recorded vote. So I'll, I'll call the, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, voting in favor, Counselor Calada, Counselor Valentino, Counselor Ellis, Mayor Fenske, Deputy Mayor Smook, Counselor Foley, and Counselor Byer. Voting opposed, Counselor Wong and Counselor Matichak. So that's the end of our resolutions. Next, we move on to the mayor's report.
Counselor Ellis, it'll be a short report. Basically, last week, we had the Aboriginal Accord Committee meeting. From that meeting, we will be working with University College in North and the Thompson Urban Aboriginal Strategy in bringing forth a strategic plan session in the, early in the new year, to reaffirm the goals and objectives of the Aboriginal Accord. Secondly, Counselor, City Manager Gary Sepatelli, myself, we're on a conference call with the Heart and Stroke Representatives, and also with the Norman Aboriginal Health Authority in regards to the sharey drink issue. And other than that, I will open up floor, other councils who represented the city on other city business in the last two weeks.
I represented the, the city on, on one event, on November, I think, believe it was November 19th, attended the National Child Day Celebration, where I, where I lit the tree at the TRCC. That was also the same day as our, our Christmas parade, so both events were extremely well attended. I'd like to, to thank the Burntwood Parent Network for, for putting on, for leading the National Child Day Celebration, and all fun was held by all. Is there anyone else that attended? Counselor... Yep. I'll go to Counselor Valentino first.
Okay, thank you. Starting November 25th, with our own Stuart Walter and his wife here, I did the kickoff for the Salvation Army Kettle, and as you all know, they always look for volunteers to take a turn. It's a, it's a great thing for the month of December. So if you are interested in doing that, they always look for people to work at the kettles. On Friday, November 17th, I attended the Made in Manitoba Climate and Green Plan, and it was put on by the province. Minister Squires was here, as also was our MLA Kelly Bindle, and there was representation around the table from people all over our region, including Flynn Flons, Hud Bay, the Paws Craft, different organizations, Valley was at the table. And it was really interesting to have the province roll out their, their climate plan with the carbon tax. There was also Prairie Climate there that did a presentation, and he's also, also a filmmaker, and talked about the climate changes and how it's affecting the north in our region. So it was very interesting to be able to attend. I was there in the morning, and City Manager Sepatelli attended in the afternoon time. I also today, and for everybody's information, CBC is here this week. The, the news reporter's name is Brett, apologize Brett, don't remember your last name, but did a short interview with him today, and as you maybe have seen on social media, he's gonna be at the hub on Wednesday. I believe it's starting at 11:00 a.m., and he's just looking for stories, stories that are from Thompson, and maybe relating to our region. And it was between us, the City of Thompson, and Kenora, that he had the opportunity to come here for a week. And I know he did some high school athletes today, but it's all for CBC News, and it's really great that the City of Thompson has got this opportunity to have the media here for the week. So if anybody's available, I know people even came up to him today when we were down at the TRCC. So it's at the hub, you wanna go and tell a story, or some history about Thompson or anything, he's, he's open to having coffee with people for Wednesday at the hub. The other thing I want to mention is, this coming weekend, Power Smart Winter Games, the, the host tour is taking place, host tour number two. So you may see a lot of faces in our community this weekend. They will be touring all of our facilities, all the sports are gonna be representative, Sport Manitoba will be here. So there'll be a lot of people in our community for the second host tour. And if you haven't yet volunteered, please, please go to the website and put your name in and sign up for volunteer. That's all I got.
Deputy Mayor Smook.
Hello? Yes, I attended the Manitoba Mining and Minerals Conference, November 15th and 16th in Winnipeg. It was a very interesting conference, and Tim Gibson from 2020 and Keisha Davis, our own Economic Development Officer, are all ready, are also there, and will be giving a full report to council in the next week or so, when we finish traveling.
Thank you. I'd also like to remind citizens about the 2018 budget consultations that are being held on November 30th at the TRCC at 7:00 p.m., so we hope to see a lot of people out to that. Is there any other, any other events anyone wants to report on? Mayor Fenske.
Yeah, just a reminder that as we adjourn for the regular meeting, the council will to stay online for the in-camera meeting.
Okay, so just... What's that? Oh, oh, sorry.
That's quite all right. Last weekend, I attended the kickoff for Operation Red Nose, and I want to encourage people to volunteer for that. It's such a worthwhile organization. You can make up teams of three from your family or from an organization, or you can go into headquarters and, and they'll put you on a team of three. And it's a real fun thing to do, but it's so important for safety on the roads. And the other thing is, is that at the end of the season, the donations that clients make are given to charities. So please volunteer for Operation Red Nose, thank you.
Thank you. And so with that, we'll... Oh, yep, go ahead.
I had attended the Industry Night at UCN, I would like to congratulate UCN, I believe they had close to 80 participants, students in industry, and it was a really nice, successful effort on their part to get employers and potential employees together. So it was a nice evening, it was a very nice, it was a networking evening, and it was a very nice affair, so congratulations to UCN for that.
Thank you. So is there any other events to report on? Okay, so we'll move to adjournments, so I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Valentino? Counselor Calada? All in favor? We're adjourned.